To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Plain Township Board of Trustees regular meeting for the month of March, the first meeting on March 3rd. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rumsfeld.
I am here.
Mr. Kripinski.
I'm here.
Ben, would you please text Dave? If you haven't already? Thank you. Uh, so additions or corrections to the agenda? Uh, I would like an executive session at the end of the meeting. For purposes of compensation and yeah, for right now, just compensation. Tom, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Ben?
No, I do not.
Bud, are you with us? Yep.
Yes, I am. Nothing bad.
Okay, um, Chief? You're on mute. Okay, so I'll take it that Jack doesn't have anything. Anybody else that I missed? Okay. So we will go to approval of the meeting minutes from the let's see, which one do we have first? The February, the third meeting? I've reviewed them. I don't have anything. Tom, do you have anything?
I do not. I'll make a motion. We approve the February 3rd meeting minutes.
I will second those. All in favor, Tom?
Yes.
I vote yes, and the meeting minutes are approved from February 3rd. So we had our next meeting on February 17th. I also didn't have anything for those.
I did not either. I'll move. We approve the minutes of February 17th.
I will second that. All in favor, Tom?
Yes.
I will vote yes, and the meeting minutes are approved from February 17th. Pending warrants, I have reviewed those. I did not have any questions out of them. Tom, did you?
Um, just a question on the Huntington 3000 Command Lighting for 121. Did they go down, Jack, or what was going on there?
Yeah, that Command Lighting is the large lighting system that is on top of the rescue. And a portion of it due to repair, just due to age, required a number of the arms and lamps to be repaired.
Okay, thanks. And then the other thing I had was the Paltz Refresher Course. We enlisted 35 individuals. Will you have 35 attending?
Yeah, we did, and we've already conducted it. And thanks to the Nash Mount Carmel New Albany Hospital, we were able to do that in their auditorium, and it worked out really well. We had plenty of social distancing and the cafeteria was there for meals, so it was a pretty good event that way.
It's great. Okay, thanks. I was curious. Thanks.
You want to make a motion, Tom?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the pending warrants in the amount of $278,972.13.
I will second that. All in favor, Tom?
Yes.
I will vote yes, and the pending warrants are approved. Next on the agenda, City Liaison, Mr. Durick. Did I hear you had moved locations again to a secret bunker somewhere in a warmer climate?
Well, still in a warm climate in Vegas for about 10 days. Then I'm heading home. Poorer, by the way.
That's how they build those big buildings.
Right. I'm sure it was worth it.
I hope so. Council met last night. We had a few, several things, but ones that are of note. We approved the construction of a road that's going to be known as Ganton Parkway. It's actually on the west side of Beach Road, south of 161. It's initially going to be a partial, it's going to be a roadway that will go up to about where Winding Hollow is. It will facilitate development on that west side of Beach Road. Ultimately, it will be potentially a much longer road. It will go up through the Winding Hollow property, parallel along 161, and come out really by the fire station. So it's the first phase of what potentially would be a much longer roadway. Should take some of the pressure off of 62 and 161, and will also allow for development behind the fire station there along 161 and that property.
So our, Mike, is that going to be a reconfiguration of old Dublin Grandville then into a Parkway, or how's, what's the route of that?
Well, it's going to go up through Winding Hollow, and it will use some of, I think, old 161. And then it will branch off by Kitzmuller and run along the back of that property along 160, the expressway 161.
Oh, okay.
So a little bit different. It'll allow for more development. We're only building one small phase of it right now, just in it really starts on Beach Road and dead ends up up about where Winding Hollow is. It runs east to west and then kind of veers up towards Winding Hollow and stops. So it's really going to be for development and access initially.
Oh, cool. And that's, if I'm not mistaken, was it Amazon is going to be on the south side of that, just on the west side of Beach?
They'll be on the south side, correct. South side of of that Ganton Parkway, and they will be on the west side of Beach Road.
And it kind of follows what was in your newest strategic plan?
That's exactly right. That was shown in the strategic plan as a potential longer term road development for the city. And along that line, we also approved the strategic plan.
Did you? Okay.
It finally got reviewed by all the various committees and groups in the community, and it was approved. Another item that we approved is there's a playground, Sompton Park. It's in the Lynx. And we're going to be entering into a partnership with the HOA for that area to remodel and update that park, bringing in new equipment, potentially a picnic area. And basically redoing it. We have a program over the next several years to redo a lot of the community parks or playgrounds, not so much park, but playgrounds. And this would be the first step. And the interesting part of this is that the HOA will pay 40% of the cost of what's going to be done. So it'll be new equipment, new surfaces, and ideally like a picnic area there as well. So that was the biggest part of the meeting.
All right. Thank you. I see David's joined us.
Yeah, sorry. I got time got away from me. I was eating dinner and just talking away. I'm like, oh, my gosh. Mary and Ben are so nice. They were texting me like, hey, get in here, knucklehead.
I'm sure they left the knucklehead off of it.
Yeah.
Just finishing with, with Mike, it was going to slip in. Ken is with us, so I was going to try and get him early in the meeting in case he had something else to do. So Ken, thank you for the written report that you gave us. Anything you'd like to add?
No, other than if you do talk to any of the homeowners or residents, just let them know to make sure that if they receive something in the mail, to make sure they call us so we can get a report sent. Get a document.
For the work, we were talking about work comp fraud earlier, Dave, and how some people are getting mailings to their homes implying that they, or stating that they had applied for work, not work comp, but unemployment comp.
Well, my son got one from some fictitious company here, Citizens One Personal Loans, and I was like, you gotta be kidding me. He doesn't have any loans at all. So there's all types of stuff going on.
Yeah.
Just, a lot of people just want to throw that stuff away, and it can be helpful for us if they just call us and let us know, and we can even do a report over the phone. We don't necessarily have to do it in person.
Yeah.
Sure.
So we've had a couple employees. Should I be notifying New Albany Police about that? I mean, I had already notified the Department of Job and Family Services, the unemployment website.
So they didn't, they didn't instruct you to contact their township employees?
Yeah, firefighters.
They didn't instruct you to contact the Sheriff's Office?
No.
Okay. Normally, what we're hearing is they, they ask them to contact us so we can come out and do a report. If, if they don't require that, then I guess, you know, as long as you reported it to them, they'll forward it on. But normally, what they've been doing is having us do a report, and we forwarded it on to the IRS, so they have the numbers.
Okay, so you would like us as the employer, or do you want the employee contacting you?
If it was sent to you as the employer, yeah, give us, give us a call, maybe, you know, tomorrow morning or something. They can have a deputy do a report with you. Take down the numbers, or a detective might even be able to call you if it's more than one. And if it's, it's sent to a residence, then the resident would, would contact us directly.
Okay.
Hey Courtney, it's Chief Spunkle. Do you want to send that email out?
I send what email out?
Well, just to let, unless you already know the specific names, just another general email to tell everybody who we're supposed to notify.
Okay, well, I know Ben sent an email, I believe it was last week, out to everyone, because there is a website that you need to go to if you are, you know, if this has happened to you. But yeah, I guess we can follow up with an email to let New Albany Police know as well to file a report.
Okay.
And the individual firefighters do know because I had contacted them?
Okay.
If it's with the firefighters, the Plain Township, I would contact the Sheriff's Office. You can contact New Albany. I'm not saying, you know, not to do that, but I would think that would be more our jurisdiction, but that's, you can do either one, whatever you feel comfortable.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Dave, you want to drive?
Sure. Okay, that gets us to item number eight on the agenda, I assume.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. 2021 Pool Season Preview with Columbus Pool Management. Do we have any guests here besides our staff?
Mr. Chair, we have Bonnie and myself on the line, as well as Mary. And then Fred Enter from Columbus Pool Management has joined us tonight. They operated a number of pools last pool season, and he has some insight to share for the benefit of Plain Township.
Great. Well, I'll turn the floor to you, Ben, to facilitate this discussion.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Well, as I said, I invited Mr. Fred Enter to present to the board and share some thoughts about their experience operating pools last year during the pandemic. And what we could expect for this year and how we can continue planning for our options. I sent out some information to the board previously, just kind of outlining where we're at currently. We don't have any new guidance from public health yet about standards for pool safety in regard to COVID. We're hearing that more vaccines should become available this spring. And so we're, we're just formulating some different scenarios that we could take action on. But Fred can share kind of some best practices they observed, what were some opportunities, and maybe some of the challenges from last year. So Fred, thanks for joining us tonight, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Ben. Hello, everyone. Ben, just to add a little bit of information there. We had the, there's a local City of Columbus Aquatic Group. It's called the Aquatic Roundtable, and they meet every couple of weeks. And this past week, they did have a meeting, and they had a couple of the health departments come in and talk about some of the trends that they were expecting within the industry this year with COVID and the circumstances. Everything that we're gathering from these conversations is that most of the regulations that were in place last year are going to be in place this year. They do not anticipate the easing up of the regulations. However, as more vaccines occur, that, that could change. But as of right now, they, they're expressing that the restrictions possibly could become more stringent, but it's doubtful that they feel like they're in a pretty good place with the codes and regulations at this particular time. They do anticipate that they're going to maintain the sanitation. There were several discussion points regarding pool furniture, and the Departments of Health stated that last year, there were a couple of different philosophies. Some went with pool furniture, while others didn't go with pool furniture. And when they have pool furniture, they, they did say that it is expected that it gets sanitized every two hours. But if it's somebody else's private furniture that's brought in and removed when they come and go, that that's considered their designated area, and if it's just a location where people are sitting and taking their information, or taking their furniture and such, that obviously there's nothing within that realm to sanitize, other than the restrooms and you know, front desk high touch points. So that's what we're hearing from the Department of Health. And we've talked with Delaware, we've talked with City of Columbus, couple of different branches through the counties. As far as what we experienced last year, we had 14 of our managed pools open last year. And, and we saw a variety of different ways in which people manage their pools. I will tell you that all were successful in their operation. And we felt very comfortable within the realm of our managed pools, because we have two sides of pools. We have a managed pool department, which consists of pool management lifeguards and operating of the pools. And then we have another side portion of it, which is just pool service, where we go in and we take care of a swimming pool. We do a basic clean in the morning and then take care of the water chemistry and then leave. Now, what we had saw was the managed pools had a high success rate of opening, and were very successful with meeting the regulations to where those pools that were service pools, they didn't have the budgets or the personnel to maintain the sanitation. So the service side struggled to where the management side didn't struggle, because the management team was able to meet the requirements of the sanitation. And I found that the sanitation was probably the most challenging for folks, but once they got used to it, it ran very effectively and efficiently. Now, as far as the social distancing and mask wearing, mask wearing was a challenge last year at the beginning of the year, but as it moved through the year, people got more accustomed to mask wearing. And within the realms of the pools, there's the staff has to wear masks at all times, and we're waiting for confirmation that double masking is to occur this year. So we're waiting on word on that. But in terms of guests who are visiting the facility, as long as people are social distancing within their designated areas, some of the locations did six by six areas in which they painted off or taped off areas where other people used field lime and sectioned off places where people could sit where their interactions were separate from one another, as long as they were within their zones, they didn't according to the Department of Health, they didn't have to wear a facial mask. However, once they decided to get up and use the restroom or to walk to concessions, even the fact of standing in the concessions lines, it was required that the visitors wear a mask. In areas where there's a front desk area, all the facilities that we worked with had a plexiglass barrier that was built as a sneeze guard between the front desk and the guests who are entering and exiting. One of the areas that I think that's going to take some examination is swim lessons. Swim lessons was very difficult to do because it's almost impossible for an instructor to teach a group of four to eight kids, depending on the size of the group. It was almost impossible to teach them without physical contact. So one of the things that seemed to work well was we did a parent-child lesson and had some success, and that was Steve Nye, who we've worked with at, with the Plain Township for numerous years now, where Steve introduced a program with the parent joining for the swim lesson, and we we saw a lot of success within that. And the parents at first were not overly enthused about it, but as they got participating, they started to understand different mechanisms for working with their children and teaching them swim lessons. And in the end, it was a very successful program. Social distancing could be a problem within the pool. You know, there were different takes on it. Some folks or some cities required or pools required that if you had lane lines, you kept lane lines in the pool so people could get a sense of what the differentiation between the six-foot rule was within the pools. Others put tape around the pools in six-foot intervals, so people were aware of it. You know, what, what we found is that in the water, it was really difficult to keep kids from kids. Mom and dad would try, but you know, they're out there having fun. And I'll, I'll tell you what, the we had a pretty doggone good year when we were working with these different age groups, and I was really pleased that how it was received. I did find that a lot of the parents and visitors who came to the pool, yeah.
So, you know, this is really creative, very good stuff. And I know this is what you guys were doing from last year. With the vaccinations, which are projected per the president to be pretty much anybody can get one towards the end of the May. And with states opening up, do you think we will have similar protocol requirements, or do you think the requirements are going to be back closer to normal?
I don't anticipate that they're going to go back to normal this year. They may go back to some semblance of order next year. I just have a feeling with only 100 days of summer that the health departments and regulations are going to maintain where they're at with their current regulations that they set in place last year. I, I don't see them relaxing those. I could be wrong, but from all indications and all conversations that we're, we're having, it's given us the thought process that social distancing and sanitation are here to stay.
Thank you.
And Fred, you know, thanks, and that's, thanks, Dave. That was one of my questions, too. You know, when, when you were talking about the pools that you managed last year and said that they were very successful, very successful financially, or successful in operating a season with the restrictions that were in place, because I know, you know, like Upper Arlington did a couple of sessions at each one of their, or multiple sessions that people could sign up for, and you know, things like that, but you know, how, what's your measure of success?
The pools that I had, that we had operated were successful on both levels. We, we certainly saw and what a lot of the places did is they didn't allow outside admission. They just worked through membership sales. So the members were very aware of what the criteria was when they were coming into the facility. And the members actually helped police the facility to maintain the service, because they knew that a lot of locations were not open. So in all of the pools that we had regarding membership, their memberships were as high as they've ever been. Now, we do have some smaller HOAs that did contact tracing through their gates as they're entering, because they could scan in their gates, and that was sufficient for the health department, and they ran it much more similar to how it had been run in the past with the addition of sanitation and social distancing. So we saw that operationally, there were multiple ways to run the operation. We did have to adjust the operation in comparison to previous years. But fundamentally, in regards to visitation, visitations were up. Now, most of the places did what they called a half-day clean, where they would close for 30 minutes at three, from 3:00 to 3:30, or 3:30 to 4 o'clock. And they would do what they called a deep clean. And what they found is this allowed for a transition to occur to where the morning folks who visited the pool had their day planned out, so they would leave at the midpoint, and then you'd have your night folk, which we discovered are a completely different group of people from the day group, the day visitors, and the night group loved to come in, and the facility was clean. So we actually got two separate visitations during the day, and if they did a reservation system, every two hours to two and a half hours, the clientele would turn over, and we were able to meet the needs of the clients.
Yeah, because, I mean, just my, let me finish one, Tom, and then it's yours.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no. My, my recollection of our annual cost to operate on a normal season is about $300,000. And between memberships and day visits, we would take in about $300,000. And so, you know, we looked at that last year and said, based on all the restrictions that we saw, we weren't going to be able to cover the operations. And unfortunately, with our budget the way it is, you know, we can't suck up $100,000 or $200,000 and and have it be viable. But my hope is, as Dave was saying, that, you know, I had seen the news yesterday where the latest federal word is that at least all adults will have access to a vaccine by the end of May. You know, that people will be more comfortable going out if we could structure something. And, and thanks again to Ben and Bonnie and Mary and everybody else who contributed to the the, the forecast that we'd gotten, you know, with different options in there of what it would take to run the pool. But if we scaled back and just maybe ran the main pool or part of the pool and and didn't put out any furniture, let people bring their own, you know, like beach chairs and things like that, that we could cut down on the additional costs to do sanitation and things like that, and just have to worry about, you know, surfaces and bathrooms and, and things, and and somehow make this work, because, you know, our goal you know, our goal is to operate the pool. Just trying to figure out how to make that happen. I'm done, Tom. Thanks.
Go ahead, Fred. You want to respond? And I have one question.
Um, I wasn't sure what I needed to respond to. I, I think that it's kind of a wait and see game. I, I mean, I
Well, no, I guess my, my question is, and the reason I asked about, you know, what you considered success, is that if we operated the pool as any other year, it'd cost us $300,000. You know, success for us financially would be to break even, always nice to be a little bit above, but to break even. And trying to find a way with the projections that we had received to at least cover those expenses or get close to it so that, you know, financially, we can make it work. So that's why I'm, I'm interested in, you know, what is financial success?
And my question, and my question was, you know, you have this experience with these other pools, and can you give us an idea of the change in their attendance, you know, from 2019, 2020, obviously, 2020 with COVID, you know, probably affected that attendance significantly. And so what kind of drop in attendance were you seeing with this distancing and all the COVID requirements in place?
Well, you know, we, we need to look at it from apples to apples. I mean, a lot of the municipalities weren't open last year, and a lot of our pools were not a municipal, well, we didn't actually have any of the municipalities open. We had a lot of the homeowner associations. And we did have a couple of larger pools that opened, but not municipality size. But I can tell you, you know, just on an example from one of our facilities. That traditionally they had found that um their membership sales were right between three hundred and three hundred and twenty-five um. Membership sales during a normal season. And uh, three hundred was kind of where they wanted to be. And before the governor put the pool code into effect last year. They had a total of twelve memberships sold and within seven days of. His announcement, they ended up and they sold over four hundred memberships in less than uh a week and a half after that time. And they actually had a record year based on that information. And what we saw. Was because the facilities were split into. Two particular time periods, basically, you know, the morning and the PM, we, we did see the visitations were steady. Sure, just like at any time you had a cer- a situation where there was downtime, but people seemed to plan their days more effectively and efficiently. And they knew that their time, they had, they could make plans and scheduled their day a little bit easier and. I'm going to be honest that some of those pools were as busy or busier than what I recall. Um, during those days. Now, I'm not saying that was an everyday circumstance, but. The pools were busy and I think a lot of it had to do with the fact that a lot of facilities weren't open.
That's right. Club sports were an open, other activities that their kids would be in were closed. So the, the question I have for Ben and Bonnie. Is, so if we have these different protocols. When we announce, assuming we announced that our pool membership is open for memberships. We'll need to disclose very specifically what the. Operational and change and restrictions are so that the members can assess what they're getting in their membership. Um, just like gyms or anything else does that, that they tell people this is, you know, you want to go swim at the New Albany OSU. Health Center, you have to have a reservation. And so there has to be in our membership drive, a, a letter of operations and what's different than in previous years. And then maybe some type of caveat, if any rules or change or we can go back to some type of more normalcy. We'll pursue that based on state health department, you know, guidelines and requirements, whatever. That, that, that's just kind of my thought. What are your thoughts on that, Ben and Bonnie and Mary, whoever's, you know, uh, working on this, this effort?
Well, I'll say that we've been discussing those different opportunities for a year. Um. Trying to decide what might be a best fit for our community. I think there's, you know, a, an opportunity to do the best of both worlds to sell memberships and, and provide meaningful. Uh, use of those memberships even under these circumstances. We know that we're going to have swim periods. It's going to be for a limited duration. So members are only going to be able to sign up for one of those swim periods each day. Uh, we could still potentially allow. Daily guest visits, but just make them in the afternoon. We have the, the last swim sessions. We, we do have an opportunity to contain some of our costs with some of the features, whether we open them or, or close them. If we would want to, um, you know, just be transparent and let members know that, uh, hey, due to the um. Public health guidance, we're not going to open, for example, possibly the interactive play area. Um, because the kids will be in very close proximity and maybe that's something.
So let me ask you this, Ben. Is that guidance or requirements?
Uh, it'll depend on Franklin County Public Health and what they publish. So what we saw last year is Franklin County and Delaware County Health Districts had different. Requirements. One said water slides are okay. One said they're not. One said. Water playgrounds are okay. One said they're not. So we're going to have to wait and see what they actually publish for this year.
Okay. So, but I, I guess a- and that's fair. Where, where I was going with this is. Requirements and guidance are two different things. Obviously, we're in a litigous society, so we probably fi- file. Uh, follow our guidance from our health department. But uh, Fred, this goes back to you. Wha- what is your view on this? I mean, are these. Restrictions going to be pretty heavy or do you think they're best practices or how, how do they position this to us?
Well, I think your departments of health have changed tack this year versus last year. Last year they were coming into the process where they were making the recommendation that they didn't think anybody should open their pools. To where this year, because there was success within the industry in opening the pools. I think they're more open because they know that there, they had procedures in place that seemed to be rather effective. Um, as I said previously, the pools. That had a management team and that had lifeguards at them. They really didn't run into issues. The pools that ran into issues were the ones that didn't have people overseeing.
Mr. Chair, so to give you an example of how the state addressed this, they would provide mandatory. You know, these are, these are mandatory things you have to do. And then recommended best practices. You may be familiar with.
Yep, I recall this. Yeah. So Tom and Dave, my view is. A, yeah, I think I would love to see this. Us try to make an effort of opening our pool. And staff working with our pool partners, put together. A program that I'm going to say i- is c- can be dynamic. That as things start to open up more and we get flexibility that. We can communicate to our members. And guests that, you, you know, starting on this two weeks from now, we're going to allow this change or whatever the changes might be consistent with other businesses. But I, I would like to see us try to open the pool. If we can make it work and, and, and with our, our partners. Uh, I, I'm interested and concerned about the financial ramifications, but. Obviously, I certainly want to make, you know, our best efforts to try to do that this year.
Yeah, Dave, I agree. I mean, I, I think you said exactly what my feelings are on it as well. Um, you know, just um. You know, trying to, to understand just what the, uh, all the parameters are. Uh, Ben, in a, a regular year, what was our um approximately our membership sales revenue? I don't know if Bonnie's on.
I don't have that off the top of my head. I'd have to look at records that are in the office.
It's about a hundred.
Ben probably has it.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, Ben.
A hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, that, that's, I was guessing, you know, about a hundred and a half. And, you know, if, if we could structure it in such a way that um. You know, that having more features is not only uh has more cleaning time, but also more staffing to go along with that. Uh, you know, if we could structure it in such a way that uh we started out at least with um, you know, some core, like we're going to open the main pool and. You know, that probably, you know, we might get. I, I would think we would have lower membership revenue anyhow, but I would also think that, you know, that it would be impacted by. Uh, saying that we're not going to, if we were to say this, that we weren't going to start out with uh interactive, you know, area, something like that. So. Just trying to, you know, gauge the, the revenue and the expense and, you know, and find a way to make it happen.
Tom, what's your thought?
No, I, I would agree with both of you. I think, uh, you know, I'm encouraged uh with the fact that uh the vaccines will be more prevalent and. There's this trend of a lowering in uh cases of COVID and I. And uh, I want to be optimistic to believe that it'll continue in that direction. And if it does, then I think it'd be appropriate to try to have the pool open and available to the community.
Yeah, and I just underscore to Ben and staff is that we need to emphasize. The dynamic of the situation and as things become more. Normal, we will work to try to make it as much as possible, but you know, that we do have some. Tighter health concerns and, you, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I just think that uh if we can give the right message. And people know as things get better, things will be um more open, then that would be great. So. Okay.
Yeah, so final, final question I have, Dave, is um, what's the timeline that we have to operate in within here? What? What dates do we have to make decisions by?
Yep. It's already March, by the way.
Yeah, we're, we're usually halfway into membership sales by, by this time.
No, I, I understand, but Ben, uh, Fred, you know, from a contractual perspective, from looking at getting the pool ready to go, I mean, what's. As Bonnie said, we're normally um rolling already, but what, what kind of timeline do we have if we were going to hit a um, a, a Memorial Day open?
Um, within our realm, when we're. When, when uh, in, in our realm, when we're working on the pools, we uh. We are actually starting to open pools between the fifteenth and first of April. And uh, we push our openings all the way through to the, we like to have all of our pools ready to go by the first of May so that we can get in and do training. Um, there is a little leniency on that backside. Uh, for decision making, but we, you know, particularly with the fact that many of the pools haven't been op- that weren't open last year. We are concerned about maintenance and pump systems and such. Um, you know, obviously for us, we would need to know sometime in April as far as um the pool is concerned. However, our big issue is staffing and the lifeguard circumstance because last year there. There weren't a lot of classes that were allowed to take place due to social distancing guidelines and meeting guidelines. So. There's good, there's has to be a lot of training with lifeguards and your pool. Has a substantial amount of lifeguards. I mean, obviously if uh we do reduce it so that the children's play feature doesn't open. That's going to reduce the number of lifeguards and uh so on and so forth. So, I mean.
So give me a date.
Sometime in April, I.
Okay.
I can't give you a date specifically. I.
Right, but we have a couple of weeks then to uh, to try and find a way to, to make all this work and, and make decisions if we are going to do it. Uh, you know, as Dave noted, you know, what, what we might start with. What we might go to, you know, try to uh, to look at ramping stuff up because the situation is just so fluid. I mean, that, that's the challenge.
It's, it's almost easier for us to do like we did last year, just. Go and work on the plan and just keep pushing towards the plan as if we're going to open and. Put on the brakes when the brakes need to go on. And I know that, that seems kind of odd, but. Yeah, I'd rather, when it comes to staffing and young professionals in the industry. Man, we just want to gather them because if you do open, there's nothing worse than being able to open and not have a team to operate. Versus having a team and then explaining to them that, hey, circumstances out of our control. We just weren't able to get, we weren't able to open things as, um, as we had originally planned. I mean, yeah, that's bad news, but boy, it's a heck of a better option than running in and saying, all right, we need fifty people tomorrow.
Uh, Ben, your thoughts?
So our first uh contractual payment is due April first. We would need to approve that um by board act at the next board meeting. Uh, I, I think that, uh, you know, I heard Fred say April fifteenth, we really need to give him the, the go ahead to start. Work on the pool. Uh, but I would like to. Go ahead and proceed with the expectation that we're going to open the pool while staff works on a recommendation for the parameters, our membership, uh, a proposed schedule. I think there are some things we can agree on now, um, that we wouldn't increase any rates for the twenty-one pool season. Um, and then, you know, staff will come back in two weeks and see what kind of a recommendation we can put forward. And uh, plan to open up membership sales by April first.
Fred, what would be your recommendation for a fill date?
I think traditionally about, and working with Bobby, we have filled sometime between the fifth and the eleventh of May every year.
Okay.
Uh, you know, sometime within those first ten days of May, we would like to get water in the pool just so that we're able to um. Make sure that we have a little bit of a timeframe to make sure all the mechanics are functioning properly, get a good balance on the pool and. Um, you know, do an onsite training with the team and such.
Okay.
Yeah, the typical year we would have sixty thousand dollars in membership sales today. By the end of March.
I mean, would it be okay to say that um, you know, we'll let, Ben, we'll let you and staff work on this till our next meeting and then get an update and decide. Um, what um, what our opportunities are to, you know, and then go from there?
I think that's fine. Um, we're all in sort of in a similar boat, you know, with the municipal pools. And we'll have that roundtable meeting on a regular basis, but right now. Um, people are still in the same pattern. We're working on it. We'll present you our plan as soon, as soon as it's available.
Would it make sense to uh offer uh the memberships of pool passes um. Contingent on, you know, CDC. Appropriate guidelines and uh, you know, the final decision to open the pool. I know last year we had to refund a bunch, but. Maybe, you know, we could start that process if you had the guidelines put together.
Maybe talk about that in our next meeting, Tom?
That'd be fine. Yeah.
What would you want to do as far as guest cards go that we usually give with the early birds because that will open up um. Members bringing non-family members to the pool?
I think that from my perspective, that's something you and, and Ben need to talk about and come to us with a proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll work on that, Bonnie.
All right.
Yeah, I, I, I think that um, you've got good direction. We want to see the pool open. We want to work. With a great experience for our customers and members. Um, we want to keep it flexible, dynamic, put that in there. Like to see a draft. I know you guys will do a great job putting together just kind of a. Communication for membership this year and, and, and what to expect for the members and. We always will strive to comply with all requirements and uh we'll go ahead and work toward. Uh, making it the best experience we can.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you all very much. Fred, appreciate all the insights. Um, and, and Ben and Bonnie and Mary and all the people who are supporting the pool efforts, uh. Really do appreciate that and uh, Bob, that means you and your team are going to have to get out there. Is Bob on the line here?
Yes, he is.
We're going to have to get that pool ready, buddy.
No problem.
All right. Good stuff. Um, okay, uh, we're on uh. Item number nine, uh, departments and, and Fred, you're welcome to stay if you like, but uh, don't feel like you have to. Um, we're on number nine departments, the administrator. Uh, Ben, uh, I'll turn the floor back to you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I want to just compliment our maintenance staff on uh. Preparing the lease space. Um, there's quite, quite a bit of work involved in prepping it uh with, you know, cleanup. Preparing the walls, et cetera. Uh, it does look really nice. Um, still have, you know, two parties who are interested in the lease space. We, we did post it to the township website and social media and I've shared that around. Um, no additional inquiries at, at this time. See, I uh. Touched base with our legal counsel about the bankruptcy filing, the status of our proof of claim. Uh, status of the lease itself and how we want to address that. Basically, we have two options. We can um, continue the uh lease. Or uh, we can allow the uh tenant to reject the lease. Um. I, I think we're equally interested in partying ways with the current tenant and moving on. Uh, so I'm not sure it's worth holding on to, uh, but I'll have a final recommendation for you at the next meeting. Did have a chance to review our um. Challenges at Maplewood Cemetery with legal counsel, um, working on a letter to address the board's desire to. Uh, notify um, an individual of the parking limits and how to move forward with that. I've not received any further update from uh, the New Albany Police Department about their efforts to engage this individual. Uh, but we continue to work on that and try to find a solution. We had one applicant express interest in the joint park district. We had one applicant express interest in the Joint Park District Board opening, provided that letter with the materials for your review. That also has been posted to the township website and social media and circulated. Did get a call from Dave Wharton, the Parks Director. He he wanted to know if there was a timeline in filling that position. The current incumbent, Tim Sokol, is willing to carry over, but I think he would like to transfer his seat sometime soon this spring.
I mean, they've got a nine-member board, don't they?
They do.
So if they had a position that was open for a few weeks, they could still operate.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And if Tim wants to stay, by all means, we appreciate it.
Yeah, no doubt.
Did hear from the city manager that ODOT has agreed to fund the safety cable barrier on one sixty one. So that should help a number of rules.
Ben, we were going to try to recognize some of these individuals, past members of zoning and Parks Board and all that. Do we have a date on when we're going to try and do that?
I was planning to do the recognition of Rick Wieland at the first meeting in May. Was hoping we'd have the opportunity to name another appointee to JPD before we do the recognition for Tim Sokol, so perhaps the next evening meeting in April.
Okay. Sounds good. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no. So this safety cable barrier is a popular safety feature for grass medians on interstate highways. There's a significant stretch of it on three fifteen through Worthington. It does a good job of preventing those crossover accidents that often result in serious trauma and fatalities. Chief and the Fire Department can tell you how many times we've had that scenario within New Albany Plain Township. So I think this will be a really great safety feature to help prevent that.
That that's great news. That's great news.
First half property taxes. As you may recall, we submitted a request for advanced payment on first half collection. County Treasurer did extend the payment due date to January twenty nine. Fiscal Office has received significant funding so far. We're not quite to half of our expected income for the general fund. But these are coming in on a weekly basis and we won't have the full dispersment for another few weeks. But it seemed like it was going pretty well. I don't know if the Fiscal Office has received any additional information about the status of collections. I had reached out to the County Treasurer to see if there was any falloff from prior year, but did not receive a response.
I don't have any other additional information either.
Thank you, Courtney. So we had a chance to talk about our pool season. Staff will continue working on projections as information is made available. What we really need is public health districts to finalize their required guidelines for the pool season. That is the biggest unknown. We can go ahead and plan for the same regulations that were in place last year. I think now that we know more about what took place and how to manage it, we're in a pretty good position. Our pool facility is quite a bit larger than others. So Upper Arlington, for example, only admitted one hundred and fifty patrons at a time. Our facility is more than twice the size of the Tremont Pool. We have over an acre of deck and water plus another acre of grass that provides seating and picnic areas. So I think that we could have a very productive summer even with the restrictions that were in place last year. Had an opportunity to review the fire station roof investigation with a consultant. Good dialogue there. The recommendation I received was the township isn't a good place with what we have now to proceed with developing a bid package and limited design to go ahead and you know, move this forward in the second quarter. The consultant didn't think that there was much to gain by doing an additional investigation, mainly because we can only see the underside of the roof. And once they tear off the shingles and get to the decking, we don't know what else they'll uncover. So rather than spend additional funds investigating the underside, you know, go with what we have, be really prudent and judicial with the way that we formulate the bid package. Things like reaching out in advance with the supplier to know the timeline, the availability of the SIP panels and the other essential items. And then going ahead and formulating our bid.
Yeah, that's the piece that concerns me the most, I guess, is that if if they had to start replacing a large number of those panels and given the current climate in the construction industry, you know, don't know what the the time would be to, you know, to get them that we could have an issue in the in the engine bay.
Yeah, the current investigation identified eighty panels for replacement. There are approximately two hundred and fifty total panels on that stretcher roof. The back of the napkin engineer's estimate for the SIP panel replacement was about eighty thousand dollars. Before we get into, you know, the shingles and the chimneys. So there's going to be a substantial cost to this project. It'd be great if there was some additional funding that would come through. We know the Fire Department did receive a hundred ninety thousand dollars in BWC rebates in twenty twenty. So that's fortunate. But just a preview that the engineer's estimate on this project is going to be significant.
I had conversations with Ben and relative to this and the approach and saw reports that had been prepared and I think what Ben is suggesting is our best path forward. The, you are right, Dave, that there could be a backlog in getting additional SIP panels if we needed it. But when we contract, we can let the bid package goes out, let potential contractors know that, you know, we're looking at probably minimum of maybe eighty, but they need to be able to provide more.
Yeah, what's, are those of standard size? Or are they custom based on the placement on the roof, do you know?
They're typically standard size. And then, you know, they can cut them to fit.
Yeah. Because what I was thinking, Tom.
They're like four by eight. Don't know for sure exactly the size that's out there, but there is standard sizes and the consultant was not able to provide that to us at this stage of the game.
What I was thinking is, yeah, if we know that we need eighty, do we just get a hundred? And, you know, at least at least that you'd hope that would get us over the hump with with anything else that we needed. Or maybe we find out how many good ones we have and then go the other way. But yeah, you know, just again, seeing the construction industry, you know, you want to, you know, get the roof ripped off and fixed and back covered up again.
That's an item we need to concern ourselves with and figure out how we're going to manage.
We also talked about the best avenue to address the the chimneys, you know, one thought is we just do the repair that's necessary. The other thought is there's a significant amount of work to do and maybe it would make sense just to tear them down to the framing and just re- replace all of the brick. So we need to look at some different cost scenarios there and see what's most cost effective.
And there was a discussion that the two chimneys, there are areas that have been identified in the reports that show are compromised and maybe we have in a base bid to repair, but as an alternate item, replace or, you know, tear them completely down and not rebuild them. There it's it's a surface brick. The the structure is there. It's just the 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 brick and the tieback and what's behind it and if it's properly being directed for drainage. And so the thought was possibly to in the base bid have a repair, but as an alternate, have them give us a replacement number and then we can look at the economics and and make a determination which way we want to go as they get into it.
Tom, is that like rip the veneer off and then re-brick it? Is that what we're talking?
That would be the total replacement, yeah. There's areas, there's areas that have been identified that can be possibly patched, but they don't know until they get some of it off.
Yeah.
And when they get some of it off, hopefully they could just repair those areas and move on around that. There's a louver there that's been leaking and having water going down the inside of it of the of the chimneys and that that area there is not good and needs to be repaired or replaced, so. But but it's a it's a veneer on a steel frame, steel framed chimney, so it wouldn't have to be totally torn off. It's just it's just figuring out how to make sure that water won't continue to get behind the brick veneer and come down and cause problems.
Well, glad you're keeping an eye on it and Ben and the chief as well.
Working together, but I think this is the best approach at this stage in the game.
So I would hope that by the first meeting in April, we would have something to present to the Board of Trustees as far as looking to authorize going out to bid. We have a little bit of additional work to do, but that's what I'm hoping for.
Sounds good. Good discussion. Okay. Anything on zoning that we need to address?
Just to let you know, we're having our training with legal counsel next week for the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Zoning Commission. We do have a public hearing on a variance and we received a variance request after this report was prepared for the Walnut Street subdivision. So you may recall, this is thirty seven acres east of six oh five, bordering on Metro Park on two sides. They are proposing twelve lots with two streets exiting on the Walnut Street. One of those twelve lots will be less than two and a half acres, hence the variance request for that lot. The rest of the subdivision would comply with the township zoning text. There will be a public hearing on that and I expect there will be a lot of interest from the neighboring residents, especially those who are most impacted by the street network.
Ben, how much smaller than two acres where they are two and a half where they're talking about going?
Yeah, two point zero.
Okay, and and two is the minimum that we have for septic system reasons, is it not?
So when we did the land use plan back in two thousand and eight, there was a general recommendation that through those soils, two and a half acres was a good size minimum lot.
Oh, tuna, okay.
Now, the developer already has some initial soils exploration and on their site plan, they have a primary and secondary proposed leach field as well as a well location on that two-acre lot. So they would still have to comply with all of the public health regulations. They'd have to have a full soil survey. They'd have to get it approved. We're just the first step.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That gets down to the road maintenance department and Bob is on the line.
Good evening, everybody. We have used around sixty-five tons of salt so far this year. We finished up repairing the the water line in the building today. I sent you guys pictures. I don't know if they came through or not. And then we backfilled some graves and we finished up up at the office Monday in the rental space, so it's about it.
Hey, Bobby, I did get your pictures. They look good and thanks for taking that on and keeping it in-house and fixing it. That's great.
The guys did it. I was off last week, so they took care of it. And then we finished running it through the bay. We had to run it through a non-heated part, so we put it inside of a PVC pipe and then we're going to hook it to the furnace to have heat blowing through it whenever the furnace kicks on in my office to help keep keep it from freezing, so.
Oh, thanks for the picture of the space. Yeah, it looks good.
That's all I've got.
Ben is the the fellow that that ran the the music business, you know, the the wedding kind of thing that was proposing, you know, having some some shared space there with other people that are in the similar kind of businesses. He's still one of the ones that's interested in the space.
He is.
Thanks.
Does he have a timeline within which he'd like to move or, you know, I mean, is he needing space urgently?
He he's ready to to move at our, you know, leisure. He has a current space in Innovate New Albany and he's just kind of outgrown it, looking for a chance.
Okay, thanks.
Let's go ahead and keep moving. That gets us complete with the road maintenance department and Bob. Great job there. Appreciate all your hard work there. Just the one thing you said, you said there's sixty-five hundred tons. What is our average usage on a on a year? I wasn't
It was sixty-five ton, not sixty-five hundred.
Oh, sixty-five tons, thank you. What what is our average?
It just depends on what the, how bad a winter it is usually. I mean, we try not to overuse it if we can get by without putting it down. We try not to put it down, but
Do you know how much we used last year?
There was years, years back. I mean, I would get a hundred ton a year. I mean, it's, you know, we had a little more road mileage then, but it's about the average.
Yeah.
And speaking of road mileage, Bobby, the engineer sent over a report on bridges.
Yeah.
Was trying to understand. I I I got two pages in the email that had been attached, but it seemed like there may have been more pages. I mean, I think all the bridges except one on Klaus were very good and the one on Klaus was satisfactory, it said. Is there anything we need to be thinking of there?
No, not right now. They're all fairly new bridges, really. Should have only been like two pages.
Oh, okay.
Because we only have what is it, five or six bridges?
Yeah, the second page referred to, it it seemed like it was referring to like different, like a survey of each bridge and it had different parameters and I I thought they might have intended to attach each one of the the bridge surveys to it, but
They usually send a graded report for each bridge. That was not included in the materials. I'll be happy to request that.
Yeah, I, my only question was, you know, I assume very good means we don't need to worry about it in the next few years and you know, I, the one that was satisfactory, especially since it's on Klaus Road and there's only one access to Klaus Road. You know, that one, just want to make sure satisfactory meant that we were still good for years to come and nothing that was imminent that we needed to be planning for.
Dave, from my experience, that that is the case. That report was very favorable and I think we're in good shape on bridges moving forward for a number of years.
Great, thanks, Tom.
Okay, that gets us down to the Fire Department. Chief, I was going to say Hoover, but it's not, okay, it's Chief Rupp. Hi, Jack.
Good evening, everyone. Run reports, we we gave you a battery of information about last year's runs and that the run we had for this period was fifty-three mess runs and thirty-one fire runs and for the latter part of last year, we were reporting that our runs were increasing and actually January and February of this year, those runs January and February of this year, those run numbers fell below of what we were experiencing last year, which were already lower than two thousand and nineteen. Uh, so it'll be interesting to see how our runs continue through uh, uh, the remainder of the year. In, in November, you know, we equaled the two thousand and nineteen and, and uh, December, we actually went ahead of two thousand and nineteen and now in January and February, we're dropping below the, the runs that we saw in two thousand and twenty in January and February. So um, we'll, we'll watch and, and see what, what takes place there. Uh, we don't need to necessarily unless you've got some questions over some of last year's runs, the reports that we uh gave to you. The other thing that we have on the agenda is if there are questions about a turnout gear at this point. Uh, we had a, a large number of turnout gear that was purchased in two thousand and eleven. So we have an increased number of turnouts uh that need to be replaced this year. And those that were purchased in two thousand and eleven are all in backup uh positions right now. Uh, and so what we would purchase uh this year uh would actually then become the first line in uh gear. There's a variety of ages right now between the gear that uh that we need to, to uh put into the backup. So I wouldn't anticipate uh, the repeat of what's occurring in two thousand and, or what is recurring this year from the large purchase in two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, Jack, the, the question I had on turnout gear was um, yeah, and you noted it in your, you know, your memo or the memo that was prepared um was that there are some firefighters that don't have a second set of gear. And, you know, I think as we, you know, saw all of the um the information over the past couple of years on carcinogens and the importance of having a second set of gear that you know, they can get out of their primary gear and uh if they have another um event that they need to go out on immediately, they've got a clean set to put on. Um, you know, what, what would be the cost of uh for all of our full-time firefighters to make sure they had that second set of gear? I mean, it looked like there were maybe four sets or five sets that uh would be required.
Well, we actually only had three of the full-time firefighters that did not have a second set. Uh, and, but there was uh one of the lieutenants that his second set actually failed the annual inspection. So we have four sets uh that we need to, to purchase uh and plan to purchase to get everybody into uh a position to where they have a primary set and then they have a second set that's somewhere between five and ten years old.
So is, are the numbers that we saw and, and I apologize if I didn't read it correctly, are the numbers that we um that we've seen for turnout here, does that include ensuring that uh all the staff has, all the full-time staff has that second set available to them?
Yes, that, that will include that, yes.
Okay, and I apologize. I, I didn't read that correctly then. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody had a, you know, all the full-time people on a second set because it's.
Yeah, and what we try to do when we hire somebody new so that we don't buy two sets at the same time and then, and occur a large number at any given time like we're having with two, the two thousand and eleven uh age equipment is to be able to, often we have back, we, we have spare sets, if you would want to call them that. So we try to outfit them in what we have that are spare sets that still falls within that five to ten year window uh to give them their second set. So it's not a brand new set, but.
Understood.
Okay.
It's just like when you, you look at um, uh, you know, Alyssa and Anthony and um, truly who else was on that list who Brad, yeah, so where we don't have that, um, I mean, I'll say personally that I support, you know, if we have to buy two sets to make sure that, you know, that every firefighter as they come on, you know, has those two sets, then um you know, that's, that's important to me. I mean, it's uh, and I'm not saying it's not important to Dave or Tom, but you know, I just, based on everything that we've seen, that's, that's something that I fully support is making sure that they have two sets.
Yeah, and I fully appreciate that and I know that they fully appreciate that. Um, and, and in those cases, wh- what we've done is that uh, i- if they've had a set that needs laundered in that, then the staff has kind of moved them around in a position where they may not be on the engine, then the remainder of the shift and, and to medics know that their equipment can be laundered. So I can assure you that they're not putting dirty equipment back on.
Okay. Well, I, I know you are uh committed to their health and safety as well, so uh, but if that's something that you know, at some point you need to come to us and say, hey, we got the situation and to, to make it work, you know, this is what I recommend, then you know, please um bring that to our attention.
I will do.
Hey Chief, um, we had talked about utilizing the remaining uh funds in the Phoenix Outfitters PO to purchase three sets of turnout gear. Go ahead and order those. And then the remaining sets, we can place an order for after the permanent appropriations are approved and that's where we will allocate additional funds. So I would just, you know, ask you to prioritize which sets to order initially and to let staff know what order the others after we approve the permanent appropriations.
Appropriations. A- and we still expect the permanent appropriations to probably occur uh the latter part of this month, first part of April.
Well, they'll need to be approved at the next board meeting and then we can um a- approve a resolution to purchase uh at the first meeting in April.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jack. Appreciate the update. That gets us down to the township fiscal office. Bud, are you still on the line? I know that you texted me. You might have to step out. I think Bud had to step out. Uh, that means Courtney's probably still on the line. Courtney, uh, what's going on in the fiscal office?
Um, well, I just finished up. Uh, well, not finished up, but um I just sent over end of month reports for January and February. Um, cause I still had not loaded the revenue budget in VIP, so that was the holdup there. Um, so you should have those at the next meeting. Um, financial statements were submitted. Um, however, uh Ben and I talked today and I believe um there may have been a couple errors. Um, I'll be talking with Julian and Groob tomorrow. Um, so we may have to um change them and resubmit. Um, I think those are the big items.
Okay, how's all the staff doing? Are you got some, a new person?
Yeah, I'm good. It's slow. Um, just, you know, it, there's a lot of stuff um that I just know or knew how to do. Um, so transferring that knowledge is a slow process.
Yeah, I understand.
And just making sure that, you know, it, it's all getting done. And nothing's getting missed.
Okay. Well, appreciate all your hard efforts. Any questions for the fiscal office and the other trustees?
No, I don't have any.
Tom, I assume you don't. You're on mute, but uh you look like you did not.
No, I, I'm fine. Thanks, Courtney. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, that gets us down to uh the trustees. Uh, new, and any new updates from the trustees?
I don't have anything.
Uh, I don't have anything, but I wanted to point out that uh I was uh uh strucken by the fact that we had no resolutions tonight and I don't know.
Yeah, that's a great point, Tom.
I kept looking for resolutions, couldn't find any.
Ben, what are you up to?
My apologies. We'll have some for you at the, the next meeting.
No apologies.
No, I wasn't being accusatory. I just thought it was interesting, but uh.
Yeah.
But I knew we had the pool, so we were gonna be talking for a while.
Any old, uh, uh, one more time. I think I asked it, but it might be a rhetorical question. The old or new business?
No, I have none.
All right. Uh, any citizens' comments? Hearing none, I'm going to move that we go to executive session um under the Ohio revised code stipulations and for personnel reasons and um uh Bud's not on the line, so Ben, uh, do you want to give me a roll call, please?
Uh, let's just clarify that motion to enter executive session for the purposes of compensation. Is that correct?
Yeah, one, one twenty-one point two two point G one, is it? Uh, yeah, Dave, I had, yeah, I had uh stated compensation. For lack of a better um, uh, other one, um, discipline, but um, yeah, those two.
A- and um Ben, uh, who, before I do that, I need a second of the motion.
I'll second it.
Tom seconded. Uh, all right, roll call, please.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Roll said?
Yes.
Mr. Ripski?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to start with us three or what's your preference?
Yes, yeah, I, I think so. And then uh we'll text uh Ben and Jack if we need you to join.
Yep, uh, the executive session is running and let me make sure it's unlocked here. It is unlocked.
Okay, thank you very much. All right.
We're coming back. Hey Ben, you with us?
I am.
Cool. Dave's gonna sign back in, so I'll be here in a second.
All right, I think we're back. I see Tom. I don't, is Dave, okay, Dave Olm says there too.
I'm D.
Okay, we're coming out of the executive session. Roll call please.
You moved. I'll second.
Yep. Ben?
Uh, Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Ritzky.
Yes.
Okay, the time is 8:57 and we have no action tonight. Without any other business, I'll motion for adjournment. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom. All in favor say yes. Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. We're adjourned. Thank you all, thank you all for your help. Have a good day.